I mean, if you want to allow it to serve the Board to do so, but there is nothing on the agenda that would necessarily provide for it. So we can go to the Board.
All right. It's pretty much the survey. So I will hold this meeting of the Ed and Township Committee for you to survey. On our order. Please hold on one second.
Yes, sir. Um, yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's up, sir.
Wait a minute. You should ask her how she'd like to be addressed.
Which pronoun? Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Feitner?
Here.
Ms. Fitzsimmons?
Here.
Mr. Haynes?
Here.
Ms. Langell?
Here.
Mr. Philip Sabatino?
Here.
And RJ Sabatino not here. Okay. We, as, as you know, we did actually, notice was published of the meeting. It was posted here and then also on Ed and Township. And also notice was given to the newspapers.
Correct. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from May 26 meeting. The minutes were provided by our committee. Has everyone had an opportunity to?
When did you send those out?
They were sent on Friday. I would entertain a motion at this time to approve the minutes.
Something I guess it doesn't fly, so I'm sorry. Wait, wait, motion. I won't get a motion, sorry. Okay.
So Mr. Haynes has made the first motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any debate, discussion, corrections? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes as presented? Please signify by saying aye or no or.
Aye.
Aye.
Then we're approved. Seeing as how we don't have any real need for reports from our officers at this time, we'll go ahead and skip over that. There's no need for credit reports. There's no financial reports that is done.
I do have a comment here. I mean, do we have a balance sheet that shows negative net worth? What, I mean, is, is there at some point the benefit of just sort of look forward to?
There would have to be accounts set up probably to have some kind of financial statement. And I don't believe there have any financial accounts set up at this time.
I don't know that you need an account to have a financial statement. If you have zero cash, a balance sheet can be created to show.
The liabilities.
The liabilities.
So like our mailings? We did, did we do, have we started the mailings or anything like that yet?
No. I don't know that, I mean, I don't know that you all have any liabilities. You don't owe anything.
Well, I mean, the things that we owe.
There's legal fees.
Yeah. We owe lots of things.
Well, you're not incurring, you're not incurring, you're not incurring any legal fees. The township is paying the cost of that.
But don't we owe township the reimbursement for those?
That, when, if and when amounts are received at that point, then there will be, that's, that's when that will come in. But right now, there's not.
There's been no invoice present.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have to land on it?
Yeah, right.
I mean, I think that, you know, are you implying that if we don't collect any money, that your legal fees are waived?
No, the township is paid for this. The township is basically not, would not get reimbursed, would not get reimbursed.
I just think that it would be good if township would share the legal fees with the NCA that at some point it would be your end.
Township would need to remind an invoice to the NCA for consideration.
Right, invoice with detail.
Yeah, and I think that, I'm sure that, I'm sure that's what will happen once we get to the point where there is, you know, we're getting receipts.
Yeah, when appropriate, I can go ahead and.
Yeah.
My understanding is that there's approximately $111,000 in legal fees associated with the creation of the NCA. And we did some quick informal calculations yesterday based upon the existence where it came to the commercial. And just the commercial alone, if this NCA is up, functioning and running legally, would bring in approximately $183,000 a year. So there are revenues to be anticipated upon the creation.
Correct.
Yeah. And so I would predict that the Board of Trustees for that township would make a request to pursue the debts associated with the creation of the NCA.
That's our understanding, yes.
Yeah, so.
There's been no move to do that yet.
So I, some form of discussion of it, I guess. I think that, as we know from previous meetings, when things are presented in year term before a meeting, that you have to go one more time. Sometimes I want more time to dig, that's one more time to digest the information. That if you have $111,000 of invoices, that, and I understand, like, we'll pay another invoice for tonight and, you know, that there doesn't make any sense to not share those with the details so that we can get to look at them and understand how much of that $111,000, all or less than all, we believe as the Board are appropriate to be reimbursed. So that we can begin to have that discussion.
Those invoices haven't been created to share yet. That's the, what we're trying to say.
Well, of course they have. The invoices have already been tendered and paid.
But we're not receiving invoices, our Board is not receiving invoices from ICE Miller. We would receive an invoice from the township to pay to the township. So they would generate an invoice to us.
So I think that we're just looking at a, for, you know, at the creation of, you know, the discussion of the creation of a balance sheet, i.e. meaning that we are, we do have liabilities as we stand right now. So in our, at our current period, we stand still. We owe the, you know, the township $100,000, I think some $100,000 of the creation. So just the question of what are, you know, what are our responsibilities? Because there are some.
And the invoices exist. You know, we don't need you to invoice us if we're not due to pay them yet. But certainly you can share the invoices voluntarily or under Freedom of Information Act with the NCA.
Yeah, I believe, I believe that the steps associated with the business, such as the legal invoices that the township is going to be seeking reimbursement for, would take place upon the legal recognition of this NCA. So once this NCA is established, at that point in time, the township will put together, you know, copies of the bills that we pay, proof of payment, put together a cover letter, send it to the Chairman of the NCA and make a request for reimbursement. And that should initiate discussions between the two bodies. And that business will be resolved.
And that would then create a balance sheet with liabilities that we report on.
Well, first of all, in response, the Board already exists. It's existed for, it's just months, it's made, it exists. And although we don't yet have a revenue stream, we do have a liability that is not yet due, right? And even though it's not yet due, it's still a liability. Right? It's like having a note that I owe a bank, you know, $100,000, but it's not due until, you know, sometime in the future. We have a liability. And we'd like to kind of request what you've just described, since we've been legal here for many months, to, you know, go ahead and begin to better understanding that it'll be updated with additional legal fees that may be incurred before which time we have provided to pay it. But to begin to look at some of the historical stuff, I don't know how far back this goes, Mr. Vance. Right, I mean, does it go back to, you know, so, I mean, the invoices, you know, I'm sure show date, time, hours, what they've done. And are probably from you and I think probably from others also.
Yeah, I don't know. Certainly from, certainly from me. I mean, I think when we began discussing this, I think probably before the pandemic. It was prob, I would guess probably October of 2019 would be my guess is when this first came up.
Is you, is there any opposition, Mr. Vance, that you have to show me up with a set at your convenience, something about tomorrow?
So what is your request? I'm trying to figure out.
To see the sum of the invoices that show date, time, you know, what was accomplished and so forth for $111,000.
Right, with, with the approval of the intergovernmental agreement and with the approval of the, of the intergovernmental agreement covers both those documents, correct?
Right, I mean, it's, right, I mean, I think that probably the intergovernmental agreement that we cover basically addresses the reimbursement to the township for these, you know, associated with the establishment.
Right, upon, upon, you know, the business of tonight being successfully concluded, the township will be putting together a packet of information and sending it there to the Chairman of the NCA.
That would be something that maybe I could take up at the next, take it to the next meeting.
You know, we don't have anything else.
Right, I mean, because I think we saw, we saw a few miles ago before we get to the, getting, we still need to get the declaration filed after that. Then that will be a journey.
Right, because we're not a legal entity.
We are, no, we are, we are a legal entity. We are a legal, we are a legal entity. We just don't have a source of revenue, so we're.
Okay, so people could send us bills all day long. We're already set up to do, obviously, we're not generating.
Right, for example, we got, we got a, we got a public records request. As a public body, we are obliged, we are obliged to satisfy that.
Yeah, Mr. Spector, I think that you've gone and talked.
Yes.
I'm gone and, so let's go ahead and conduct the business. And if you and the trustees feel appropriate, that would be my request.
Absolutely.
Let's move on.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is old business. The first item on old business is Resolution 2022-5, which is approving the, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Ed and Township and providing for its signature. Has everyone reviewed Resolution number 2022.5?
I have, I just have a question as the documents may present my signature. The same as what you, you mailed me with the red line.
Yes.
Good. I understand.
Any other questions or comments on the resolution?
Were all of your red line items addressed and added? Or were there any that were questioned, I guess, and not?
No, I think we came to a negotiation. And the agreement as presented is acceptable to the township and to me.
Perfect.
Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion for the approval of Resolution number 2022-5.
I'll make a motion.
And is there a second? And is there any further discussion or debate? Hearing none? Can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Spector?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Feitner? Ms. Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Langell?
Yes.
I'm Ms. Langell, I'm sorry. Yeah, you know, I'm having a hard day.
You had a good weekend, huh?
Mr. Sabatino?
Yeah.
All right.
The next on the agenda is Resolution number 2022-6, approving the form of declarations and directing the statutory developer to provide for its signature and filing and repealing and replacing Resolution 2022-4. Does anyone have an opportunity to review this resolution?
Might as well read the discussion. Can you explain how this, this is the new one that's going to replace?
Right, so what, what happened at the last meeting was that we adopted Resolution 2022-4, which approved the form of the declaration. And I think that folks who voted on that may not have fully understood what they were voting on. And so what we agreed was, we'll leave 2022-4 in place and we'll just repeal it at the next meeting. And so this essentially, basically just restates what 22-4 was. And it also then approves the form of the declaration that the township approved last night. Township has signed, has provided its approval of that. And so it will now, so now it is in the hands of the statutory developer. And we are going to be needing to go and approach, to approach all the property owners to get the declaration, the declarations signed by them and filed. I would anticipate, given that this is about a 25-page, you know, 25-page document and we are dealing with at least three lawyers, I am guessing that there will be some tweaks to this declaration before it's done. But the resolution authorizes, you know, its approval with, you know, changes which are not, you know, materially adverse to the NCA, to the NCA, and the township authorized, authorized that. Without change, that would not materially adverse to the township.
Okay, so this one, quite a bit of action. You're working to me to approach all these other.
No, I will do, I will do that. That is, I think that, and basically we will, you know, represent that, you know, you will, you'll be signing it on both the statutory developers.
I would prefer to sign them today after we pass them and so forth. And so they'll already be fully executed.
Right.
And they could be executed in counterpart. Do we have a notary here?
I have a notary. So we'll, we'll get, we will get all the, we'll get all of that taken care of.
So the motion on the table, if I understand, is repeal the old one and to replace the replacement.
That is the discussion on the table. There's been no motion yet. Have there any further made or discussion?
That was my discussion. The motion to be made is to replace the old one with this one.
Yes, I have.
Repeal the old one and replace it with this one.
Yes.
Since it was mentioned that you're going to be the one going around to the various lawyers and getting all those documents approved, what's a, I know, I don't know where we are on timetable. What's a reasonable time that you think you'll be able to get an answer back?
Well, I mean, try, I'm going to start tomorrow. I am guessing that it's going to take, you know, it's the summertime. I'm thinking probably five to six weeks is probably, you know, this is not going to be a high priority for these folks. So if we get something done by the first of August, that would be really good.
Is that going to make whatever windows we need to make with everything else?
Yeah, it'll, it'll, I mean, I think at the end of the day, we may have to go to the county auditor and say, look, you know, can you extend the time? And I would want to get everybody to pay in this calendar year to just, just to write it, write a check. In the meantime, the one thing that we will need to do, I think sooner rather than later, is, is we will need to get a bank account. And that's probably the next, that's probably the next, I, the next, for the next board meeting is to make sure that we get authority to get a depository, depository of the stuff to that.
Yeah, and I think that most.
And, and, and levy charges. And levy charges, so we will levy the charges and set up and, and, and get, get a bank account.
So can we discuss, you know, if we get hiring a financial person to replace treasurer position? Just, I'm just kind of curious, when, when do you think that person will be necessary?
Probably need to get that, it's, I would guess, we're probably going to need to do that when we levy, when we levy the charge. And probably speak with, probably need to speak with the township about that to see if we need to get somebody to do that.
Well, it'll be not soon or we start having money from that.
Right, but we, we, once we levy, once we levy the charge, we should be able to send out a bill and have, we'll have, do something with the money.
I actually have an additional question that, I think it's page 14.
Declaration.
Yes.
And this is a facility, this is a facilities charge. So the facilities charge, so.
Not relevant yet.
Right, if we were to, if we were to have a facilities charge, we most likely need to hire a charge administrator who would go in and calculate this.
All right, there's no more discussion on Resolution number 2022-6. Go ahead and make a motion for its approval. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
And is there a second? And maybe have a roll call vote.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Feitner?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Langell?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
The motion passes.
That finishes our old business item on the agenda. There is nothing listed under other business. So it is time for the order. Is there any other discussion that needs to take place?
Yes. I'd like to, and you had some good questions about if anybody comes in certain very indicative that, that, you know, we get the invoice out, the money's going to come in, a little bit confused, and then the millage goes to the auditor. But this nine cents per foot will come directly to the NCA.
We would like, we would like it to, we would like to have it set up so it, so that is the way it flows, yes.
That's, that's the way it is set up.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And so as, before we adjourn, as you're directed as an officer for NCA to go and deliver these notices, these invoices after we record the declaration, which I presume you're going to do promptly?
Yes.
For?
Well, we're going to, we're going to start the process promptly and we will do it as promptly as we can, right?
So, so I know we talked previously that you believe we should not record it with my signature alone.
Correct.
Although, I'm not sure why, don't we have a real deadline and?
Not really, but, but the thing is, you can't levy a charge on anybody. The charge doesn't accrue until, it is a lien on the property until the property owner signs it. So we can't just go ahead and say, here's a, here's a community development charge and file something that's a lien on somebody's property until we get the owner to sign it.
It's not true. And the profit taxes are levied on us all the time.
Yeah, but, but.
And the auditor changes their profit taxes.
Right, but you, right, but if you take a look at chapter 349, as far as what a community development charge, that's, that's a reference for, for a valid community development charge.
So we talked previously about we have a real deadline with the auditor in order to, is that for the millage or is that for the?
Well, I would say it's for the, it was certainly for the millage. It is also for, to get a charge placed on, I mean, it is an arbitrary deadline because the auditor can always waive it. All right, I mean, August 1st is kind of like, you can sort of, if you submit it to the auditor, you can force them to put it on the tax bill. And they don't really have any discretion as to whether to do that. The way that this, that these work is that if our commercial owners say, just put it on the tax bill, we don't want to pay it this year, well, then, then the auditor has, then the auditor will certify it. But we're going to send them the bill directly in the, with the desire that they pay us this calendar year.
So why would we ever care about the auditor if perhaps having the properties pay the nine cents directly to us? Whether we're paying our own way or not?
Right, well, this is, they collect their own way by foreclosure. Right, but it's also, but also the auditor would, but the auditor would, will place it on, the auditor has to place it on the tax bill. We can't go ahead and just place it on the tax bill.
I see.
So just for a few next steps, then, can you be reaching out to the five organizations that are affected by this and then to receive their sign off? And then that's when the declarations will be part of?
Correct.
Again, I want to come back to your answer because I'm not sure I agree with you. Have a mortgage. The auditor doesn't put my mortgage on the tax bill. My lender has recorded their mortgage. And if I don't pay my mortgage, they can do what they want to do to collect it. What does the, if we're invoicing directly, what does the auditor have to do with what's going on here with the nine cents per foot?
So.
That we want to be paid directly to us, not to the auditor?
Right.
If it goes unpaid.
If it goes unpaid. So in the case of, in the case of your mortgage, your mortgage is subject to taxes. Now, in the case of these community development charges, the lien that we have with respect to community development charges is a lien on a parity with taxes. So it's superior to the, it's superior to the mortgage. And so only the auditor can place a lien that is on a parity with taxes. Okay, so that's, so.
So in that case, is there, it's going to have to be paid to the auditor then, or is it to us or not?
No, only, only if, if it is unpaid. So let's say that we, you, you basically say, okay, we're going to, company, we want you to pay us our community development charges. They say, no, we're not going to pay it this year. So the auditor then puts on the tax bill and they have, and then they have to pay it. And if they don't pay it, then it becomes a tax lien and we could, and then community authority can go ahead and foreclose on it.
We have to buy the tax then?
Well, you can go, I mean, I don't know if you buy it. I think you, you basically have to go in and, you know, but they have, they have to pay it. And they're, you know, you have a foreclosure action and you get paid eventually ahead of everybody else.
I understand, thank you. Now, I had, I have one other question, just comments, and, and some my co-members of the Board here are interested as well, that there was some discussion at a previous meeting about one of these properties have already been transferred, sold. And is that correct?
Correct.
And that, that the, you know, cooperation agreements or whatever was signed by that seller and the county or the, that township required a footed date notification before a sale date place as relates to some insurance that this nine cents property that's closed to all the parties. I mean, is there anything going on in the woodpile here of this thing that was sold? Has a new owner been properly informed and aware of it?
I, right after we had that, I think it was on the, it was mid-April. And so I had a conversation with both the seller's lawyer and the buyer's lawyer to make them aware that this charge was, number one, to ensure that the buyer knew that the property would be subject to this. So that was number one, and they were. And so this had been properly, properly disclosed. So they are basically awaiting us to contact them with the declaration for them to sign. So they are, so they are indeed aware of that. So that was one of, one of the core five, one of the core five properties.
So these agreements, you know, of, in exchange for the quid pro quo of tax abatement, we want nine cents and some of the other incentives that we provided by the county and township to these developers, which they agreed to nine cents per square foot. All happened long before these pillars are constructed, long before tenants moved in. And so what issues do you expect as you make the rounds from the respective lawyers of, oh, my tenant didn't know about that? Oh, we have to talk to our lender? I would presume that any reputable developer would have informed their lender in advance.